All right. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let me first say that all of the council is present. That the acting city administrator, Patrick Fox, is present as the city administrator. The record is being kept by the city clerk, Michelle Hughes. That also present is Mary Lou Cadlick, the HR director, Jack Clements, the chief of police, John Duros, the fire chief, and Denise Clavett, the economic development and planning chief. All chiefs. So if you would please join the city council in a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for A couple of things right off the bat. First of all, I think Mr. Fox might be able to help clarify this. The Main Street Bridge, I believe, will be closed from Saturday at 5:00 p.m. until Sunday midnight. Is that true?
Actually, so it's for, it's Pan Am Railways is doing a concrete deck replacement on the Main Street Bridge, right in front of the transportation center. The closure will start about 6:00 a.m. on Saturday, the 26th.
Said 5:00.
And extend through till sometime Sunday evening.
Sometime, right. The next announcement is, this is six months, but I was reminded today. Tomorrow is six months before Earth Day 2020. And that Earth Day 2020 marks the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. Many cities across the United States are recognizing this, as is the National League of Cities. So I expect SACO will do some arranging to recognize this also. And finally, I don't know where it is, but we received a print of City Hall's tower from, oh, do we have that handy at all? From a local resident artist, Ray Lund. And we've had it framed and we're going to be placing it in some suitable honorable location within City Hall, recognizing one of our local artists.
There we go.
Oh, and here it is. And so here's the framed print by local artist Ray Lund. Some of you who were TA students might remember that he was also on the faculty there till he retired. So thank you, Mr. Lund. Next up is public comment. And first in the public comment is Steve Scheiman, our school department liaison.
I'm looking forward to the, on the 30th, we have a joint workshop. I'm looking forward to that, and that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good. Next up is Mr. Rob Biggs. If you would step forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Rob Biggs, 92 Middle Street. I'm also the executive director of SACO Main Street. And for those of you that weren't there on Saturday, you missed a great event with our pumpkin harvest festival. We had over 3,000 people in our downtown. Unfortunately, our city team lost to a five and a seven-year-old in our water bucket challenge, but I'm sure they'll come back strong next year. We had, Batman was there. We had over 100 kids in costume for the costume contest. And first time for a rock wall in our downtown. Looked pretty impressive. There's some great photos that our photographer took from the city and a great video that we put out as well. So in addition to that, I'd like to clarify something. This Thursday, we are going to have the SACO Main Street Candidate Forum, which all our councilors, both opposed and unopposed, as well as Mayor, Merrill Race, will be there in attendance. And we're going to have a series of questions for them to answer. Although we don't endorse any specific candidate, SACO Main Street does believe strongly in their, certainly our right, as well as our responsibility to vote. And with that, you need to have good information. So we feel this is the best way for people to kind of see what's going on and see what opinions people have. It'll be streamed live, as well as recorded, and can be replayed later as well. We'll put that on our Facebook page and our website afterwards. So anyways, there was an erroneous report today, apparently last week, in the Courier, where it said our event was going to be Monday, or excuse me, Thursday, the 21st. So it's actually Thursday, the 24th, and it's not tonight. So if there's anybody here for the forum, it won't happen right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Plamen, where, you want to talk to you?
Oh, yes.
Good point. It's going to happen in these chambers, in this area here, from 6:00 to 7:30.
Thank you, Mr. Biggs. And let me just say that the city team will have practices for the next, so anyway. The next up is Mr. David Plaven. If you would please state your name and address for the record.
My name is David Plaven. I live at Two Surf Street. I'm here to speak in support of the resolution for the SACO Bay erosion mitigation plan. Make no mistake about it, this is possibly our last best chance to get something done before the beach and its coastal homes are either gone or irreparably compromised. If there's any evidence required for the true value of SACO's coastline to the city, look no further than this past summer. The dredge of the SACO River replenished Camp Ellis Beach, and there were more people visiting than we have seen in many, many years. A second restaurant was opened, and one can only imagine what might be if we can make this situation permanent. A further benefit from the sand was seen in the past three weeks. We have seen two hurricanes and a subtropical storm pass by in the Atlantic, had the powerful nor'easter from last week, and one would expect major damage, road washouts, closures, and more. Just track back a year ago, when an October storm closed North Avenue for the entire winter and caused damage to coastal homes. So far this season, the extra sand has acted as a buffer and reduced the effects of powerful 18-foot waves. It has not eliminated all the negative effects, but if we reduce rave strength, it would create more opportunities for public works projects to be held elsewhere in the city, which I'm sure Pat would appreciate. Summer rentals, summer residents, and tourists remain SACO's biggest industry, and it's time to expand on that, not to contract or hold on. Only by remediation of the jetty's savage effects can that become a reality. We can start on that road tonight by passing this resolution. I'm asking all the councilors to vote in support of it, to make this unanimous. All of SACO and its surrounding communities benefit from a vital shoreline. Citizen initiatives have shown a new interest in getting something done, and we need to make this happen now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Plaven. I appreciate that. And so just a quick reminder on public comment. Under council procedure, states that it's three minutes per speaker. I set a timer, but when the timer goes off, all I ask is that you finish what you're saying. Most speakers don't take more than three minutes. Next up is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on accepting the consent, or on bringing the consent agenda to the floor?
So moved.
I have a motion from Councilor Smart. Do I have a second on the?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Smart, seconded by Councilor Archer, on bringing the consent agenda to the floor. May I ask, any councilors wish to remove any item from the consent agenda to my right?
Actually, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, excuse me.
After a more complete reading of the consent agenda, can I withdraw my motion?
Your motion?
Yes.
How about withdraw, how about pointing, pulling one of the items instead? Oh, I'm sorry. I understand.
I have to.
Yes, you may withdraw your motion on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion.
So Councilor Minton makes the motion. Councilor Archer, it is your second stay. Councilor Minton has made the motion. And Councilor Archer has seconded. Nothing wish, no, councillor to my right wishes to remove any of the items. Any councillor on my left wish to remove any of the items? Fine, thank you. Any discussion on the consent agenda? To my left, seeing none. To my right, seeing none. Councillor Archer.
Aye.
Councillor Gay.
Yes.
Councillor Doyle.
Yes.
Councillor Copeland.
Yes.
Councillor Minton.
Yes.
Councillor Smart.
I must abstain.
Thank you. Councillor Johnston.
Yes.
The motion passes 6:01. Six in favor, none opposed, one abstention. Next up on the agenda is our illustrious and new mother, Glenne Salas, and with a presentation on the past six months.
Hi, yes, thank you for that generous introduction. So this evening, I am here to present the pre-audit findings for fiscal year 2019. It might seem strange to be presenting fiscal year 2019 performance here in October, but due to the regulations regarding modified government accrual standards, there's a window of up to 60 days to do additional entries, and of course, there's been a few other reasons for delay. Okay, so overall summary of where we stand. The general fund, unassigned fund balance, will close the year much higher than originally anticipated. So some of you may recall that during the budget process, we had presented to you a preliminary forecast of what the unassigned fund balance would be at the close of the year, in order to give council a sense of how much money was available for use of undesignated fund balance in terms of the budget process, in order to minimize impact to the mill rate. We had originally forecasted something around $900,000, due to much higher than anticipated revenue largely. The final number for the undesignated fund balance is looking to be closer to $2 million in terms of surplus, and that, I think, is very good news for the council, because we have had several significant items come up as budget amendments over the last couple of weeks. I think there are a couple more budget amendments in the hopper, and we do have sufficient funding in order to fund those budget amendments, at least the ones that are on the table right now. Overall, for fiscal year 2019, operating income is predicted to be $1.27 million. This was largely because revenues were $1.17 million above budget. So it really comes down to revenues significantly exceeding original forecast. Economic growth is mostly the deciding factor here. It was much stronger than predicted and helped the city earn far more than anticipated on items like interest earnings, excise, development fees, and state revenues. As a general practice, when we're forecasting revenues for the budget, the finance department prefers to be conservative, because of course, we as a city do not have any control over how much revenue we bring in on these supplemental revenue items. So that's part of the, that's part of the spread. And then part of the spread is simply that economic growth was much stronger than predicted, and we're seeing that across many different sectors of our economy. On the expense side, we were under budget $100,000. So there was a little bit of savings on that side. Most of it was related to open positions in certain departments, as well as fringe benefit lines that had not been audited against actual employee selections for some time. So we did that audit as part of the fiscal year 2020 process and recognized significant savings on the fringe benefits line. So this total, the $1.27 million operating income, is still pending the city's annual audit, and we're working through those final entries with the auditors this week. Now I'm going to move through the departments. I did a very thorough budget analysis, just because this is sort of our last one for the year, prior to the annual financial reports being published. The assessing department was at 96.9% of budget spent. Assessing spent much of the year with only one full-time headcount. Payments made under contracted services to temporary help to get us through the year compensated for some of the underspend on the salary lines. Building maintenance was a little high, 103.8% of budget spent. That comes to $2,400 over budget. Heating fuel for City Hall came in $3,600 above budget. So that's really where that came from. Capital projects. The assigned fund balance for capital projects is going to be transferred to the new capital projects fund in fiscal year 2020. So going forward, if you look at the budget report, you'll see that the approved budget is significantly lower than the actual budget, because we've been rolling forward this assigned fund balance per the city charter, five years. The city has, has three years to begin spending. Money is reserved for any capital projects, and as long as money continues to be spent, there's no time limit on how long that funding is reserved for capital projects. So we do roll forward a significant amount of money from year to year in order to support long-term capital project and infrastructure development. Again, all of that's going to be transferred to the capital projects fund in fiscal year 2020. City administration was at 96.8% of budget spent. The grants and project specialist position was left vacant from February through the end of the fiscal year. City clerk was at 95.4% of budget spent. The city clerk's office was generally under budget across all line items for fiscal year 2019. Code enforcement was 90.4% of budget spent. The second code enforcement position was not filled until February of this year, so again, an open staffing position. Contingency was 105.7% of budget spent, $28,329 over budget. $12,000 of the overspend is associated with Unit 91 expenses that occurred before the sale of the property closed in August. The remaining overspend is due to higher-than-anticipated legal fees, which have been expended out of this account as they have occurred, as we have expended the full solicitor budget line item some time ago. Counsel was 103.4% of budget spent, but that was just $580 over budget. The travel and training lines were overspent. All those supplies were underspent to compensate for the overage. It wasn't enough to bring the department in under budget, but we have sort of updated these council budget line items for fiscal year 2020, so that shouldn't be a problem going forward. The finance department was 95.6% of budget spent. Base pay was overbudgeted, and we've corrected that for fiscal year 2020. Travel and training was under budget due to the timing of annual conferences conflicting with turnover in the department, and we weren't able to take advantage of those trainings. Fire and ambulance was 97.3% of budget spent. Employee turnover allowed the department to come in under budget, but the overtime lines were underspent. Fringe benefits came in $221,000 under budget. Again, we've been rolling forward these percentage increases rather than analyzing benefits costs at the employee level. Employee selections can have a significant impact on how much you're spending on the fringe benefits lines, so we've done all that work for fiscal year 2020. Information technology was 92% of budget spent. Licensing fees came in lighter than anticipated. We've done a lot of work with the licensing costs, reallocating them to departmental budgets, so this should be easier to track going forward. Municipal insurance was 119% of budget spent, $39,000 over budget. This line, if you go back a couple of years and compare the budget to the actuals, it's just been consistently under budgeted the last two budget cycles. We realigned the insurance renewals with the fiscal year, which returned $161,000 from non-spendable fund balance to cash. So that surplus more than compensates for this $40,000 overage. Additionally, I worked through the allocation of premium between the city and the school. I worked with our, I worked with PNC on that, and we found that the city was actually paying too high a portion of the premiums. So that'll save us $63,000 in fiscal year 2020, and that'll help bring our premiums in line with the budget. Parks and Recreation was a little over budget, $38,000 over budget. There was just higher-than-anticipated participation in our programs, which is definitely a good problem to have. When you have more participants in these programs, it requires more expenditures when it comes to supplies and overtime. This is more than covered by higher-than-budgeted revenues, which came in $80,000 above budget. So Parks and Recreation expenditures were $38,000 over budget, but their revenues were nearly $80,000 over budget. So in terms of net impact to the unassigned fund balance, Parks and Recreation was favorable by $41,000. Planning and economic development was 96% of budget. This department experienced turnover in fiscal year 2019. There was savings, because the economic development specialist role was left open for some time, and that's matched by lower transfer from the economic development fund, which ensures that the economic development fund is going to have more revenues available for projects that Denise Clavett has identified for the coming years. Police Department was 95.2% of budget. Again, several positions were open for a significant portion of the year. This was partially compensated for by overtime, which was $100,000 over budget. There was also savings on electricity and $18,000 savings in maintenance. Public Works was 97.7% of budget, due to the new Public Works facility and the need to spend down bond proceeds, which are still, we still have some significant funding there. There's been less bandwidth for just some of these more everyday recurring maintenance projects. The end of the year underspend of $134,000 is tighter than $180,000, which was used to forecast the general fund balance for the approved budget book. But again, we're making up for that tighter underspend other places. The solicitor was 101.9% of budget spent. As mentioned previously, the city is dealing with significantly higher-than-budgeted legal fees, and so the remaining overspend is coming out of contingency. Supported entities, the Conservation Commission, Coastal Waters Commission, Economic Development Commission did not spend their full respective budgets, so we have some savings there. Transfer expense was high, 113.5% of budget. That's $184,000 over budget. TIF transfers came in $160,000 over budget. TIF transfers are the domain of the assessor, because they're function evaluation and the mill rate. So we do our best to guesstimate what the TIF transfers are going to come in, but we have to meet what the, what the assessor tells us to do. The remaining overspend is related to the Call Fire Retirement Fund, and is covered by $8,000 in savings in the fire department. The assessor received, oh, so now we're switching over to the revenues, which is the second page of the budget update. Assessor revenues, the assessor had $19,000 in tree growth tax. This is, this item is hard to predict. It really comes down to the sale of very large land lots that had tree growth incentives or farming incentives. Building rentals were $19,000 below budget. Accounts receivables continuing to work to receive the last of the rent owed by the former tenants of the train station. Cable television franchise was above budget, 107.7% of budget revenues. Subscription rates have been higher than anticipated, so that's good news for us. City clerk was 101% of budget revenues. I had originally anticipated that the city clerk would be light on their revenues, but at the close of the year, they had some, they had some significant revenues come in, so they met their budget. Code enforcement was 159% of budget revenues, $259,000 above budget. So now we're getting into some of these revenue items that were really significantly above anticipated, and really comes down to a strong economy has boosted available funding for both business and residential building projects. Federal assistance. Thanks to the hard work of Public Works in collaboration with Human Resources and Emergency Services, the city was granted $509,269 in FEMA compensation for expenses incurred during the 2018 March nor'easter. I really just want to applaud those departments, because that is a tremendous amount of work to get this kind of revenue back, and yet, $500,000 goes a long way towards compensating this city for expenses that were incurred as a result of that natural disaster. So great work from everyone who was involved with that. Public Works has expressed an interest in re-appropriating the surplus. So we had anticipated $300,000. There's an additional $186,000 above the anticipated funding. Public Works is interested in possibly re-appropriating this incremental revenue for the creation of a hazard mitigation fund to offset future expenses, so that the city isn't having to pay these natural disaster expenses upfront and then waiting, I mean, we're at, we're at 18 months now, waiting for the funding back from FEMA. Finance revenues were a little bit light, 95.9% of budget revenues. Lean fees came in under budget, which is a good problem to have. Interest earnings were two and a half times budget revenues, $348,000 above budget. The city has benefited immensely from a stronger-than-anticipated repo market in fiscal year 2019, and there's been a lot of buzz about that in, in the news lately. Planning and economic development, 200% of budget revenues. Now, for most of the year, planning and economic development revenue was sort of on track, maybe a little bit behind, but at the close of the year, they came in $90,000 above budget. The finance department and planning collaborated to investigate where planning fees were being deposited in the general ledger, because they weren't showing in the revenue account. We couldn't figure out why. This exercise uncovered $96,000 in revenues that had been erroneously deposited in a liability account. With the fix in place, the city now has visibility into revenue associated with, of course, a strong economy, again, many people interested in planning projects in the city of SACO. This revenue also reflects fees paid directly to the city for the services of our site inspector, which was a new position approved as part of fiscal year 2019 budget process. Police Department revenues, 107.3% of budgeted revenues. The new parking enforcement officer was able to increase revenues as forecasted. In fact, he came in nearly $10,000 over budget. So great work, and it's awesome to see somebody enforcing our parking regulations in downtown. It makes a better experience for everyone. Fault alarm fines also came in higher than budgeted. We may had made some tweaks to the fee schedule for fiscal year 2019, and that's part of why that came in high. Public Works excise tax, so that's excise, but excise is generally expected to be used for the maintenance and development of our road infrastructure. It was 115% of budgeted revenues, $654,000 above budget. Car sales remain strong in fiscal year 2019, and that boosts our excise tax revenue. Realean personal property was 98.5% of budget, $492,000 below budget. The assessor has boosted the overlay for fiscal year 2020, so we shouldn't come up short again next year. Again, this gap is more than compensated for by strong excise, interest, and state revenues. Sale of city assets, 98.5% of budget. Of course, there was a sale of Unit 91, which the city did budget for via amendment. However, there was a $10,000 placeholder put for sale of small miscellaneous assets, and this year, we simply didn't have $10,000 in assets to sell. State revenues were 108% of budget, $218,000 above budget. Homestead, Betty, and revenue sharing all came in higher than anticipated. Homestead, Betty, and revenue sharing all came in higher than anticipated. Transfer revenue was 121% of budget, $221,000, $220,000 above budget. $275,133 was transferred from the remaining balance on the Energy Fund to compensate the general fund for expenses incurred for the middle school boiler. So we ate those expenses in fiscal year 2018, but now we've received compensation for them in fiscal year 2019. And then unallocated is 19.5% of budget. There was a higher budget. It was related to slush from accounts receivable reconciliations. Our accounts receivable reconciliations are tighter and more targeted to specific accounts, so we've adjusted this budget for fiscal year 2020. And that is everything I had. Does anyone have any questions about the budget?
Any questions of Ms. Salas to my right? Seeing none, any questions of Ms. Salas to my left? Excellent report, thank you. Oops, excuse me, yes, Counselor Copeland.
I may be going too far into the weeds, but I'm just curious about the, since it's a new position, the parking enforcement officer. What are the costs and what are the revenues total?
I don't have those off the top of my head, but I could go back in and pull the numbers specifically related to that position. I know it was partially funded from increased parking revenues, partially funded from Camp Ellis, and I think there was a part that came from the tax base, just as a quality-of-life thing for downtown.
Would you give me details? I'd appreciate it.
For sure.
Thank you.
Distribute it to the council.
Yep.
Any other questions to my left? My right? Seeing none, again, thank you very much, Ms. Salas. Next up, Counselor Copeland. I'm going to look at this as a motion, so after you've read it, we'll look for a second and then discussion and a vote.
I don't see any motion language there, but...
No, it's not. It's just start reading the whereas.
Okay. Whereas, during the 19th century, the primary purpose of the Saco River was the transportation of goods and services to the manufacturing industry and residents of coastal northern York and southern Cumberland counties. The state of Maine accepted the benefit bestowed by Congress that the distance from the Lower Falls to the mouth of the Saco River would become a federal channel and harbor. Congress and the president gave this responsibility to the United States Army Corps of Engineers with its duties as described by law. Whereas, during the late 19th century and early 20th century, the United States Army Corps of Engineers advised Congress to broaden the navigational aids to the Saco River by employing jetties. Erosion caused by this construction was recognized nearly immediately, and efforts were made during the early and mid 20th century to mitigate this erosion. This has not been successful for the North Jetty. Whereas, during the latter half of the 20th century, Congress recognized the likelihood of erosion caused by the United States Army Corps of Engineers' navigational aids. A law was passed to require that the Corps correct these problems. At this point, the Corps refused to acknowledge that the Saco River navigational aids were the problem. Whereas, during the latter half of the 20th century, the public gained greater interest in the recreational uses of the Saco River and Saco Bay. Beachfront amusements, including a pier in Old Orchard built in the first half of the century, saw increased activity. Despite the fact that only 70 miles of Maine's 3,500 miles of coast is beach, the state has become known as vacation land. Erosion has become harmful to this resource and has this, and, I think it's a typo, but it should be as, not has.
Yes, probably.
And as the sand accretion at the northern end of Saco Bay at Scarborough. Whereas, in 2006, an independent study on Saco Bay erosion commissioned by the United States Army Corps of Engineers concluded that erosion north of the jetty was caused by the jetty. Despite evidence of damage from erosion north of Camp Ellis and damage from sand accretion at the south of Pine Point, the Corps restricted the impact of damage to 2,500 feet north of the jetty. Be it resolved that the city of Saco joins with its neighboring communities to ask that the state of Maine, through its governor, seek sufficient federal legislation to require the United States Army Corps of Engineers to remedy the problems of sand erosion and sand accretion along Saco Bay at no cost to any municipality or the state of Maine.
So I have a motion of resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. A motion is made by Counselor Copeland and seconded by Counselor Johnston. Is there any comment on the resolution to my left? Seeing none, any to my right? Thank you. On the passage of the resolution, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
The resolution passes unanimously, and we will begin work on getting the other communities to accept this resolution, changing the wording to fit their own municipality, and then proceed to ask the governor to intercede on our behalf to get proper funding for the repair and diminution of the, or at least the mitigation of the sand accretion and erosion. So thank you very much. Next up, Item C, and Item C is Counselor Doyle. Do you have a motion, Counselor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the October 7, 2019 Economic Development Commission meeting, Adrian Fauci, attorney for the school department, presented the school department's request for the contemplated use of Toddlin located at Five Willie Road for the public pre-kindergarten program. Excerpts from October 7, 2019 Economic Development Commission meeting, action. Andrew Goldberg mentioned, excuse me, motion to deny the consideration of the two requests dated August 7, 2019 by the Saco School Department for approval under either Article 5.1, 5.2i, or 5.13 of the Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions for the Saco Industrial Park, Spring Hill section of its contemplated use of Five Willie Road under a lease agreement with Toddlin dated May 1, 2019. Andrea Morris had seconded. Discussion ensued. Ms. Fauci, attorney for the school department, pointed out that the city has the power to grant a non-taxable use in this space, and that there does remain taxable personal property on the premises. Betty pointed out that the vote of the HEDC takes would move on to the city council as a recommendation, but that the council may do with it what they will. They don't have to agree or disagree. The motion to deny passed unanimously and will move forward to the city council. I move that the city council deny the Saco School Department's request to waive or amend Section 5.2 of the City Parks Covenants governing the Spring Hill section, and thereby not allow a non-taxable use to occupy the premises at Five Willie Road.
Second.
Whoops. Counselor Day, was that you? Were you among the, were you among the seconds? Okay, so I have a motion by Counselor Doyle and a second that came from several directions, but made by Counselor Day. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Counselor Johnston?
I'm taking a vote, are you asking?
I'm taking a vote, yes.
You gonna abstain?
Ah, yes, wait.
Okay. Counselor Smart?
Yes, to deny.
Yes, to deny.
Abstain.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Archer?
Yes.
The motion passes 6-0-1. Thank you very much. Next is Item D. Counselor Copeland, again, here. The public hearing on a license renewal?
The Bedford-Saco Country Club has applied for renewal of their special entertainment permit. The permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment, Section 93-2. Staff recommends approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, we haven't even gone to the motion.
I move to open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
So I have a motion by Counselor Copeland, seconded by Counselor Menthorn to open a public hearing on the application for a special entertainment permit for the Bedford-Saco Country Club. Any comments to my right? Seeing none, any to my left? Seeing none. Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
And Counselor Archer?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0. They now have a special entertainment permit. And I'm reminded by my friend, Mr. Millard, that associated with the resolution that passed, there is on the website the presentation the council received just a few days ago, it seems like, last Thursday. And it's worthwhile for anyone to log on to the city's Camp, Saco Bay website and take a look at that presentation.
Save on shores, Saco Bay.
And so the next item...
So, Mr. Mayor, do we have a public?
I'm sorry, we...
We open?
Oh, we have to close the public hearing, absolutely.
Did anybody need to speak?
I think that we, oh, excuse me, the public hearing is now open. Does anyone wish to come forward and speak on the special entertainment permit for the Bedford-Saco Country Club? Seeing none, Counselor Copeland?
I move to close the public hearing, and be it ordered that the city council grant the renewal application submitted by the Bedford-Saco Country Club for special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's current liquor license.
Second.
I move to approve the order.
Thank you. I have a motion by Counselor Copeland, seconded by Counselor Menthorn to close the public hearing and accept a special entertainment permit. Any comments to my right? Any to my left? Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
And Counselor Archer?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0. It looks as if we have another motion for Counselor Copeland.
At the June 10 workshop, members of the Coastal Waters Commission brought forward changes to Chapter 4, Article 7, Section 39, that would establish a time limit for an appeal of a decision by the Coastal Waters Commission. Staff recommends approval. The city council approves the first reading of the document titled Amendments to Chapter 4 Administrative Code, Article 7, Section 39, and schedules the public hearing for November 4, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Copeland and seconded by Counselor Smart to the first reading of the amendments to Chapter 4 of the Administrative Code. Are there any comments to my right? Any comments to my left?
Do I need to read them?
Second.
Do I need to read them?
No, I think, yeah.
We've called them out.
So it's, so anyway, so we have a motion for the first reading. It's been done. And so Counselor Smart, this is, this is to allow the first, allow the action to proceed to the public hearing on November 4.
Yes, sorry.
Yes. And Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
And Counselor Day?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
And Counselor Menthorn? I'm sorry. Counselor, Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
And then Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
And Counselor Archer?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0. Counselor Copeland, do you have another motion?
I do. At the June 10 workshop, members of the Coastal Waters Commission brought forward several changes to Chapter 118 that would strengthen the language in the ordinance and create a harbor master position that would be Maine Criminal Justice Academy or MCJA certified. Since that time, the Public Works Director, Police Chief, and Finance Director have reviewed and made additional recommended changes. Staff recommends approval. The city council approves the first reading of the document titled Amendments to Chapter 118 Harbor, River, and Waterfront, and schedules the public hearing for November 4, 2019.
Second.
So again, I have a motion by Counselor Copeland, seconded by Counselor Menthorn. That is the first reading of amendments to Chapter 118. In workshop, there were some, there were some comments, so I would ask if for the record, anyone wishes to make comments, this would be an excellent time. Any comments to my right? Seeing none, any comments to my left? Thank you very much. So we have had the first reading of amendments to Chapter 118. So to move this on to the November 4 public hearing, Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
And Counselor Archer?
Yes.
So this now moves to the first, the public hearing on November 4, this, for the amendments to Chapter 118. Next up, before I introduce the council resource for Item G, let me say that as mayor, I would like to begin by thanking all who have been involved with updating our zoning ordinances from the inception of the process through now. We have had an extensive public engagement meetings and are heading into our public hearings. That said, at last week's council workshop, which was geared toward presentation and Q and A by the council, several requests for additional information and questions for further clarification were asked. It was evident that since the public notification was mailed out to each property owner in Saco that there may be many more people with additional questions. Given the level of emails, calls, questions, and questions that have surfaced since the notification was mailed out, collectively, we believe that an additional meeting with questions and answers may help the public and the steering committee. In response, we will be hosting, that is, holding a separate information session. This meeting will be held on October 30 from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM at City Hall, and which, and it will also be televised and streamed to Facebook. So now on to the motion. Counselor Johnston, do you have a motion?
On February 20, 2018, the city council voted to adopt the 2018 updated Saco's comprehensive plan. The 2018 comp plan update was the result of nearly two years of review and discussion by the ad hoc committee and city staff. The community's next step was to update the zoning ordinance to align with the city's land use vision, the most forward-thinking land use policies in the state of Maine that ensures financial stability, environmental sustainability, and provides opportunities and accessibility to all. The city council formed the Zoning Ordinance Revision Steering Committee on October 15, 2018. After a competitive RFP process in the fall of 2018, the city contracted with planning consultants, TZM Planning and EF Design and Planning LLC, to update Saco's zoning ordinance. In January 2019, the city and the consultants initiated an online survey of Saco's residents and property owners soliciting input on zoning-related topics that warrant further discussion by stakeholders. A total of 1,088 people participated in the survey. A public charrette was held on February 7 at the People's Choice Credit Union, where over 70 people participated. Based on the public input, feedback, and direction from the steering committee, city council, planning board, historic preservation commission, conservation commission, other city boards and committees, and city staff from all departments, draft two of the land use ordinance was completed late August 2019. The ZORA steering committee and the planning board held individual work sessions and a joint work session to review draft number two documents. City council held a workshop on September 9, 2019. City also hosted two public forums on September 10, September 11. About a dozen residents attended each open house-style meeting and provided valuable input. Feedback from these forums and city boards and committees were compiled and integrated into a final draft that is now scheduled for a formal public hearing and adoption process with the planning board and city council. The project completion timeline revised through October 2 outlines the schedule of key dates in the process, including a public hearing for the planning board and historic preservation commission on Tuesday, October 22, and the city council public hearing on Monday, November 4. Draft three of the zoning ordinance, site plan review ordinance, and subdivision ordinance is posted online. Staff supports the proposed ordinance, amendments, and rec... Staff supports the proposed ordinance amendments and recommends the city council pass first reading and send the ordinance to public hearing. The city of Saco hereby approves the first reading of the proposed amendment, zoning, site plan, and subdivision ordinance, and further moves to schedule a public hearing on the date of November 4, 2019.
Second.
So I have a motion by Counselor Johnston, seconded by Counselor Smart on moving the... on accepting a first reading and moving the amendment or complete revision of Chapter 230 of the zoning site plan and subdivision ordinances to a public hearing on November 4. And I've been informed that there's a joint council school board meeting on October 30. So it doesn't look like the council will be present for this hearing. Any comments on the first reading and moving this change to Chapter 230 to a public hearing to my right? Seeing none. To my left? Counselor Johnston.
Not so much about the motion, it's just to remind people that tomorrow night is the planning board's public hearing for the same document.
Excellent. Planning board public hearing tomorrow night? They start with a workshop, so they wouldn't get into the public hearing until 6, 6:30?
Sure.
Any forecast on that, Ms. Clavett? When do you think the planning board will begin its public hearing tomorrow?
Public hearing for the planning board is at 5... Let me think about this.
5:30?
5:30.
Yeah, would be when the workshop begins.
5:30 for the work... 5:30 for the public hearing, from 5:30 to 7:15.
Oh, 5:30, 7:15.
And the historic preservation is 7:30 to 9:00 PM.
Oh, okay.
Tomorrow evening.
So that's two public hearings.
Correct.
Planning and HPC.
Correct.
Historic preservation. Oh, okay, thank you for clarifying. It's not a regular planning board meeting.
Nope.
Nope, okay.
Yep.
Excellent. So thank you, Counselor Johnston, on pointing out that there is a public hearing by the planning board and also historic preservation on this ordinance change.
Not on the city council.
But it's not on the...
The city website, it's not there.
It's not on the city's website. So we're announcing it now. So any other comments to my left?
I guess a follow-up question.
Yes.
Unfortunately Denise has gotten up. The question I have is, following the public hearing, are they voting tomorrow night? Or is there another period in between them voting to send it to the council?
Thank you. It is on the city's website, to my knowledge.
Well, maybe it's just not in the front slash, but calendar...
It's probably not on the front, right, exactly. So tomorrow evening, the both public hearings will be held, and then they will make some recommendations based on the input heard, and they will create a report, and the report will be sent to the city council. And then at that point, you will accept the report prior to your public hearing, which is on 11/4.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Wait, just one minute. Any other questions to my left? Seeing none. To my right? Thank you.
You're welcome.
You may have a seat, and we'll go on to vote to move this to the public hearing November 4. So I guess the motion would be to move to approve the order, Counselor Copeland? Could you make a motion to approve the order, and we'll get a vote to move it to the first... to the public hearing on November 4?
That's the motion that I made.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the motion you made.
To vote on it.
Excuse me, excuse me, Counselor Johnston, would you make a motion to move the order, and we'll get a vote on that and move it to a public hearing?
I will reread it, because I think I already made the motion.
You already... Yeah, just to...
The city of Saco hereby approves the first reading of the proposed amending zoning, site plan, and subdivision ordinance, and further moves to schedule a public hearing to the date of November 4, 2019.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Counselor Johnston, seconded by Counselor Smart on moving this item to the public hearing on November 4. Any comments to my right? Seeing none. Any comments to my left? Seeing none. Counselor Archer?
Yes.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion to move this to a public hearing on the 4th passes 7-0. Next up, Counselor Johnston.
This amendment will increase the number of Saco Police Department sworn officers from 35 to 37. The police department has not added any patrol officer position since 2000, and the city has grown approximately 16% over that period. Approval of this budget amendment affords the police department the opportunity to adequately respond to community concerns, traffic complaints, and improve employee retention. Be it ordered, the city council approves the first reading of budget amendment number three fiscal year 2020, and move to schedule a second and final reading for November 4, 2019, and move to approve the order.
Second.
So I have a motion by Counselor Johnston, seconded by Counselor Copeland on increasing the police department staffing. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Counselor Archer?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0. This is now moved to the public hearing on November 4. Next up, Counselor Smart, do you have a motion?
I do, thank you. A credit enhancement agreement, CEA, for Forsight Realty LLC Company is being presented for consideration. This application is for the CEA that will be part of the existing TIFF number 15 Downtown Omnibus Municipal Tax Increment Financing District. The credit enhancement agreement will be for 14 years with the following terms. In years one through five, Forsight Realty LLC will receive 50% of the TIFF revenues, and the city will receive 50% of the TIFF revenues. In years six through 10 of the credit enhancement agreement, the company will receive 45% of the TIFF revenues, and the city will receive 55%. In years 11 and 12, the company will receive 25%, and the city will receive 75%. In years 13 and 14, the city will receive 100%. For any remaining years of the district, the city will continue to receive 100% of the TIFF revenue. The CEA will have a cap of TIFF revenue going to Forsight Realty LLC in the amount of $396,000. The city will retain funds from the TIFF revenues to use for project costs outlined in the development project... program. The CEA was reviewed for the economic... by the Economic Development Commission at their September 9, 2019 meeting, recommended to go to city council for the first reading and public hearing. The CEA was also reviewed at the city council workshop held on September 9, 2019. The council ordered this credit enhancement agreement, which will be part of the first reading held on October 7, 2019, public hearing held on September 16, 2019, and second and final reading to be held on October 21, 2019. Will be as follows. The city administrators hereby authorized and directed to enter into a credit enhancement agreement with Forsight Realty LLC in substantially the form as presented to the city council. I move that the city administrators hereby authorized and directed to enter into a credit enhancement agreement with Forsight Realty LLC in substantially the form as presented to the city council.
Second.
I have a mo... Excuse me, a motion by Counselor Smart. And seconded by Counselor Minton to accept the credit enhancement agreement between the city of Saco and Forsight Realty. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Counselor Johnston?
Tell... Several weeks ago, I had spoken about... You all right?
Yep, just fine.
About this particular credit enhancement and the one following this. Again, I reiterate, this has nothing to do with the developer of the project. I think what they're building out there on Upper Main Street looks phenomenal. This, again, comes back to policy and goals of council for me, and how we go about administering, particularly credit enhancements and/or other financial assistance programs. While this particular credit enhancement may meet most of the guidelines, it lacks sufficient evidence that the city's participation is economically necessary in order for the project to be undertaken. So again, as I stated before, the downtown development district was created several years ago now for the betterment of the downtown, in particular, to meet the goals of the Saco Downtown redevelopment plan that was approved in 2013. Some of the examples of the approved uses of TIFF revenue is 4.7 million for municipal costs, or municipal equipment costs, 4.6 million for sidewalk and connectivity, 4 million for parking improvements, 3.5 million for bicycle improvements, 20 million for street improvements, 40 million for sewer and stormwater improvements, 5 million for expansion of broadband downtown. Those are just several of the many that are outlined in that 40-plus-page document. In there, there's 3 million over a 30-year period set aside for credit enhancements. Tonight, we're looking at 500,000 or thereabouts of credit enhancements to go along with almost $700,000 that were handed out as an economic development grant for the development across the street. And I'm challenged to understand how we are going to grow this economic... or this downtown development district for those uses when we turn around and hand money back out to every... maybe not every, but at least so far, it's a short period, we're already handing out just about everybody that's come forth with a new project. So again, with that said, several weeks ago, I had spoken to city staff about possibly making an amendment. So I will offer my amendment, and council can do what they will with it. My amendment would be that the credit enhancement will have a cap of 200,000 and be for a 10-year
Thank you. Do I have a second on the amendment?
Second.
I have a second by Counselor Gay. So we have an amendment on the floor made by Counselor Johnston, seconded by Counselor Gay to reduce the cap to 200,000 with a... over a 10-year period. Any comments to my left? Counselor Copeland?
I would like to hear from our economic development director, Ms. Clavett.
Okay, let me go through the council first, and then we'll bring her up. Any other comments from counselors? Counselor Minton?
I understand Counselor Johnston's point. I think making it the final reading at the 11th hour really doesn't set a good tone. I would much rather, if this would have been the desire, that this would have been done way before this process instead of on the last night, and I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Just as a clarification, typically, amendments are made during the second reading, and I believe Counselor Johnston has actually made his position clear in previous comments. Any other comments to my left?
Not to get in the back.
Okay. Any comments to my right? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Clavett, would you please step forward? Counselor Copeland has a question for you.
Sure, thank you.
I'm inquiring about their economic need.
As with any project, we carefully negotiate the conditions and terms with which this business needs to move forward. I just would like you to keep in mind that the facility that they have developed was primarily going to be a 7,500-square-foot facility, but after looking carefully at the requirements for what they needed to do for the contract zone, they were required for additional improvements that basically upped their financial requirements, if you will, for their project, to the tune of about $400,000, $500,000 extra. And so what they've done is they, in good faith, after meeting with the council and a couple of executive sessions, chose to double their footprint and create a 15,000-square-foot facility on Route 1, right there. And so they could have stuck with their 7,500, but they chose to go with the 15,000-square-foot facility to actually look at potentially bringing an orthomaxillofacial surgical outfit. Did I say that correctly? Not too bad, considering that's not by Baileywick. But at any rate, they doubled their footprint, and so whether they bring that or not, they have actually brought in 15,000 square feet of Class A office space to the downtown district. I just would like you to also keep in mind, I understand we're really working hard to develop a very serious, robust downtown district. Keep in mind that what they're requesting, there'll still be an additional 10 years that the money will be coming forth of this 15,000-square-foot facility. The other piece that was never considered in this downtown CEA credit enhancement agreement, if you will, was the fact that they're bringing in hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of personal property tax that is not being considered as part of the CEA. This is just basically real estate property. And so we're going to be gaining that, and that's very, very substantial when you start looking at the total value. This is not just computers and office equipment, this is, like I said, hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of surgical and diagnostic equipment, if you will.
You all set?
Thank you. Additional questions, Counselor Copeland?
All set, thank you so much.
Any council questions, Counselor Smart?
I'm back.
I have a couple of questions. Were those decisions made that you just referenced to expand the building with the intention of receiving this CEA, or were those decisions independent?
So here's the interesting piece. I started here a year and four and a half, five months ago, maybe, and so these conversations were happening before I even got here. And so those... that dialogue was going on with the city administrator and a few other folks, my predecessor, if you will. And then once I got here, I just continued the conversation. So when you start looking at what was actually going on, it's not necessarily that the decisions were made based on hypothetical, but when I got here, I wanted to be completely transparent. We came to executive session first and foremost to see if this was still a viable conversation to continue having. So negotiations are never made publicly, but they're not made in a vacuum, if you will. So we start with you folks and find out if there's an appetite and a direction, and we were given the direction to continue conversations. We subsequently went to another executive session where we talked about terms and conditions and years and what have you, and we wanted to just get that view. And then we proceeded, and so that's where we're at today.
And I obviously was there in those executive sessions, but to the extent you can talk about it and not get into too much of what was discussed there. Is there anything magic about the numbers that we finally put in here? I mean, we obviously talked about different numbers, we, you know, talked about how long and caps and things like that, but as far as the numbers that were finalized and put into this agreement, is there anything specifically that would dictate us landing on these numbers as opposed to something less?
Okay, without disclosing information that should not be publicly disclosed, the finances and the numbers that we've arrived at are pretty much what's needed to make this business viable and successful for the next X amount of years. And so anything less could mean a lot of different things, and I'm not at the purview to be able to discuss that, that's pretty much at the business owner's discretion to disclose. Put it this way, we could have gone higher, and I guided them, and you can ask the owner of the company. I basically brought it down significantly less than what it could have been requested.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional comments to my left? Counselor Johnston?
It's not a question. When I sat here a year and a half, however long ago, when they came forward with a contract zone, at that time, I was under the impression they were adding a second floor. So that's seems to now all of a sudden say they've expanded the footprint and they need this money, when at that point, all the way through the planning board process, I don't remember this all of a sudden expanding. I mean, that's the issue I have here, is this is a retroactive request, really. And now I'm sitting here being told that they may go belly up or something if they don't get this.
don't get this. Like, I don't like the process.
I'm not quite sure that's what I stated.
You said you didn't know what the outcome would be, and I'm not arguing with you.
No, I understood.
I'm just saying that it would appear as though now I'm being told they have, this is a must. And again, going back to our policy, which I voted for, and I went through it with a fine-tooth comb at the time with the former executive, or economic development director, that need, that financial need was in there for a reason, and I haven't seen it. And we can argue about whether they can legally show it or not, but it's in the policy, and I'm going to stick with my policy that I voted for, so.
Okay, Councilor Copeland.
I'm just not sure about, I do recall them talking about a second story.
That was unfinished space. At the time.
Okay. So let me ask if there are any questions to my right? Anything to my right? Anyone wishes to? Okay, then let me go back to the left. And so is there anything else? Councilor Minton.
As I recall, in the original discussion, the second floor was going to be unfinished space, not finished space, and I think that's primarily the difference we're looking at.
That's my recollection also, Councilor Minton.
Thank you.
So are we set? Councilor Copeland, your last question? Okay. Ms. Clavett, thank you. Dr. Ross Kelly, do you want to say anything? No? You don't have, this is, there's no requirement. I only asked out of a courtesy, so you don't have to, but. Dr. Ross Kelly.
I'll just briefly touch on some of the concerns and.
How about use the microphone, please?
Speak closer to the mic.
And I would like to actually compliment Councilor Johnston for, you know, having concerns about the city's financial situation and where money should be spent and so forth. So I totally respect the discussion, and I think it's good to know that people are looking into that for the city. Having said that, I think that this situation that we find ourselves in is a little unfortunate in that I think if there were issues, we could have worked them out earlier. I will say that as a developer and business owner, that working with the city in this aspect was part of the plan, and I hope that it can continue to be part of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion on the floor to amend by reducing the cap to 200,000 and the period to 10 years. Any other comments on that motion? Seeing none? Councilor Archer?
No.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
No.
Councilor Copeland?
No.
Councilor Minton?
No.
Councilor Smart?
No.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion fails 5-2. Or 2.
Amendment.
The amendment fails 5-2. Yeah, well, the motion, the amendment fails 5-2. So we're back to the main motion. That is a motion to allow the city administrator to authorize and direct, to be directed to enter into a credit enhancement agreement with Forsyte Realty. Any additional comments to my left? Any additional comments to my right? Seeing none? Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Gay?
No.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Minton?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
No.
That motion passes 5-2. The city administrator will enter into a agreement to create a credit enhancement agreement with Forsyte Realty. Next motion is Councilor Johnston.
I will pass that on to a different counselor to make.
Oh, excuse me. I should have checked on that earlier. So, Councilor Smart, would you be the counsel resource on this matter?
Sure. Hold on, let me find it. Credit enhancement CEA for Baxter &amp; Cuts LLC Company is being presented for consideration. This application is for the CEA that will be part of the existing TIF number 15 Downtown Omnibus Municipal Tax Increment Financing District. The credit enhancement agreement will be for 20 years with the following terms: in year 1 through 15, Baxter &amp; Cuts LLC will receive 60% of the TIF revenues, and the city will receive 40%. In years 16 through 20, the credit enhancement agreement, of the credit enhancement agreement, the city will receive 100% of the TIF revenue, and the company will receive 0%. In any remaining years of the district, the city will continue to receive 100% of the TIF revenue. The CEA will have a cap of the TIF revenue going to Baxter &amp; Cuts LLC in the amount of 220,000. The city will retain funds from the TIF revenues to use for the project cost outlined in the development program. CEA was reviewed by the Economic Development Commission at their September 9, 2019 meeting, recommended to go to the city council for first reading and public hearing. The CEA was also reviewed at the city council workshop held on September 9, 2019. The council ordered for the, the council order for this credit enhancement agreement was part of the first reading held on September 16, 2019. Public hearing held on October 7, 2019. And second and final reading, to be held October, tonight, October 21, 2019, will be as follows: the city administrator is hereby authorized and directed to enter into the credit enhancement agreement with Baxter &amp; Cuts LLC in substantial form as presented to the city council. And so I move that the city administrator is hereby authorized and directed to enter into a credit enhancement agreement with Baxter &amp; Cuts LLC in substantial form as presented to the city council.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilor Smart, seconded by Councilor Minton, to enter into a credit enhancement agreement in the city of Saco and Baxter &amp; Cuts LLC, operating as a business as Quince. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Councilor Johnston?
Again, I made several comments a few weeks ago, and I won't rehash them all. Nothing against your business. Welcome it to the downtown. It comes back to the policies for me. This one in particular fails to meet our guidelines under the job requirements. It doesn't even have a parameter there where the jobs they are offering are guaranteed. In the past, we've seen that with other, well, Saco Dye, for example. They were obligated to have X amount of employees. If they fell below that limit, they had a reduction in what they received. We don't have that. Wages and benefits doesn't seem to meet the guidelines. This is larger than 30% and longer than 10 years, which is, again, highlighted in our guidelines. And, once again, the key for me, it has failed to show city participation is economically necessary and involvement by the city is needed in order for the project to be undertaken. So I will, again, offer an amendment, recognizing that, like most old buildings, as I'm familiar with, you always run into unexpected costs. I have a letter that was sent to me by the applicant stating that he had put off $110,000 of urgent exterior brick pointing that was needed. So I would amend, saying that this credit enhancement will have a cap of 112,500 and would be for 10 years.
I'm sorry. So you're moving to reduce the cap to what?
112,500. I'm just cutting it.
112,500, and the period to 10 years. So this communication that you received from the applicant?
Yeah.
Say again?
Would you want me to read the whole letter? I believe all the council received it.
Okay.
But specifically in it, he had emphasized that the building was in need of urgent exterior brick pointing, which would cost another $110,000, and his remaining loan funds are not sufficient to do the work.
Okay, thank you. Any, so do I, I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilor Johnston, seconded by Councilor Gay, to amend the credit enhancement agreement to place a cap at 112,500 and the period to 10 years. So again, any comments to my left? Seeing none? Any comments to my right? Councilor Archer?
Well, I do agree with Councilor Johnston that we should definitely look at these items in the future. At this time, I'm going to vote the same way I did with the other credit enhancement agreement, just because I think it's too late in the game. However, future consideration for other CEAs, I think, is necessary.
Thank you very much. Any other comments to my right? Seeing none? No comments to my left? Oh, Councilor Minton?
I'm just going to ditto what Councilor Archer said.
Ditto. Okay. Thank you very much. Since there are no other comments, this is a motion to amend. Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
No.
Councilor Minton?
No.
Councilor Copeland?
No.
Councilor Copeland, do you wish to pass?
No, I don't wish to pass, but I just need a moment. So he wants to take it to 112, 10 years. Basically, half of what he's saying. No.
It's a no. Okay, Councilor Doyle?
No.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
And Councilor Archer?
No.
The motion fails 2-5-0. So we're back to the main motion. Any comments on the main motion to my right? Any comments on the main motion to my left? Councilor Smart?
I would be amenable to making an amendment that places a similar restriction as far as staffing or employment levels, is what Counselor Johnston had said. I don't know what exactly that language would be, and frankly, I don't know if I can make it.
Yes, you can make that motion.
All right. I don't, I don't know what sort of language that would be, because I have this.
But then, we're forcing, you gotta go bankrupt.
How are you going to word the motion?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I just thought I would throw that out there.
Counselor Johnston, do you have a motion that you could make, that Councilor Smart could second, on personnel?
I think that would probably be more of Ms. Clavett's wheelhouse, figure out, because it's a mathematically equation.
So we don't have a motion?
I don't have a motion, no.
Okay. So, any other comments to my left? Seeing none? Again, to my right? Seeing none? This is on the motion to permit the city administrator to enter into a credit enhancement agreement with Baxter &amp; Cuts LLC. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gay?
No.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
No.
The motion passes 5-2. We will enter into a credit enhancement agreement with Baxter &amp; Cuts. Next up is, is item K, the proposed city senior citizen tax relief ordinance to be called Chapter 175. Counselor Minton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The payment of property taxes is a significant challenge for the senior citizens who are either retired or working less than regular hours. In order to assist seniors in need, property tax credits are available to qualifying seniors. Due to the recent changes in the senior tax work-off program and the addition of a new program, the Senior Tax Assistance Match Program, it was necessary to implement a new ordinance. The city proposes to repeal and replace existing Section 220 of the City Code governing tax relief programs for its senior citizens. This ordinance would be cited as Chapter 175, Senior Tax Release, Relief. It will replace in its entirety existing Chapter 220 of the City Code. I move to repeal Chapter 220 of the city ordinances as part of the enactment of the new Chapter 175.
Let me, let's just get a vote on that. So do I have a second on the motion to repeal Chapter 220?
Second.
So I have a motion by Counselor Minton, seconded by Counselor Copeland, on the repeal of Chapter 220 as part of the enactment of Chapter 175. Any comments to my right? Seeing none? Any comments to my left? Counselor Minton?
I have a question. If we repeal Chapter 220 as it currently exists?
Yes.
And we understand there are currently some issues between several departments in Augusta with regard to possible back payments due under 220, does the
No, yeah.
Removal of 220 at this point impact that at all?
I do not believe that it does. Our liability was accrued under 220 at that, at a particular time, and we aren't relieved of that liability by an action this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, any other comments or questions to my left? So this is merely on the repeal of 220 to be replaced by Chapter 175. Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
And Counselor Archer?
Yes.
The motion to repeal passes unanimously. Next, Counselor Minton, you have a motion?
I move to amend Chapter 175 to include the revisions highlighted in Exhibit 3.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
So I have a second by Counselor Smart. So I have a motion by Counselor Minton, seconded by Counselor Smart, to amend 175, Chapter 175, to include the revisions highlighted in Exhibit 3. Any comments to my right? Seeing none? Any comments to my left? Seeing none? Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
And Counselor Archer?
Yes.
That motion passes 7-0. That brings Chapter 175 to the fore. Next is the administrative update. Mr. Fox?
Just a couple of things to highlight, mostly just because of the time of growth we're in, and we're kind of in an information overload mode where it's easy to miss some of the public notifications for things. So I just want to reiterate what the mayor stated earlier with the public meeting that's going to be held on October 30, from 6:30 to 8:00, for one, another chance for the public to engage on the zoning revisions. It's been a very public, publicly engaged process, but it's nice to get another chance for people who haven't perhaps seen that. That is going to be held here at City Hall.
Mr. Abramson, do you know where the joint meeting on October 30 will be held?
No.
No.
We're hosting it. It's our turn.
We're hosting it.
We're hosting it.
It will be held at, it will be held at City Hall. So, Ms. Clavett?
I don't believe there's been any.
Are you going to move the public hearing, too? Because the city council and the school board will be meeting and City Hall on October 30, starting at 6:30.
That's a very good question. I thought I dotted all my i's and crossed all my t's, but apparently I can do it quite well enough. So, good question. I'll have to figure that out.
So we'll have to make a new announcement pertaining to the additional
Yes.
Public hearing on zoning.
There are a couple of options that we have, but it won't be able to be televised, and we can just record it. That's fine.
Okay.
All right.
That hasn't been publicly noticed yet?
It has not been noticed, but I have notified, like, the boards and the committees and everything else, so.
Excuse me. Counselor Johnston?
This is for Wednesday, right?
October 30.
Is, does the school board have? Is this -- does the school board have a meeting that night? Or is this just specifically for a joint workshop?
Do you have a meeting on 30?
I was told there was no meeting on the 30, which is why I selected that date.
I'm just thinking, if it's just a joint workshop, why don't we just push that off?
Do you have a meeting on the 6? We have the workshop at 6-7. Just the workshop.
So we could do a joint --
Sorry, sorry. We have a school board meeting on the 6.
So we could do a joint workshop at 6:30, November 6?
Sure.
Thank you.
That was confident.
So you can have City Hall on the 30. We'll take it the 6.
So I'm all set to notice for the 30?
All set to notice the 30.
Thank you so much.
So thank you, councilors, for that input.
Well, that was only meant to be one example of some of the information we're trying to deal with and get out to the public, but there's a lot of hot topics between issues with the 112 traffic study and implementation, whether it be the zoning, planning board issues. With all the growth going on, I just encourage people to check the website often. Just favorite the Saco website and check it. It's constantly being updated, and trying to put the hot topics that are -- that have a lot of moving pieces to the forefront on the first page. The calendar could use some updating, I think, from some items that were talked about tonight. So -- but just go to the Facebook page and website often to try to stay ahead of these. It's hard to reach everybody through their best mode of advertisement. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions of the city administrator?
I want to thank our public works director, wearing that hat, for all of the phone calls I've received about Garfield being closed for left turns. And I know you're one of them that's having to change his path to get to work in the morning, so I remind --
I don't share that publicly.
I actually remind people of that when they call or email, that you are part of the group that is being impacted by this, and I thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Councilor Minton, any other comments to my left? Seeing -- oh, Counselor Copeland?
Just want to give a quick shout-out to Saco Main Street for a fantastic event. Tons of kids, thousands of people. The police kept us safe. The police were even taking pictures of kids in their costumes. There was a wonderful interaction with city staff, Saco Main Street, and it was a fabulous event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to say something?
Yes.
Okay, please. Counselor Smart?
I wasn't sure if we were on council comment yet.
We're not at council comment yet.
Okay, well, I can wait.
Okay, great. So additional questions or comments for the city administrator? To my right? Seeing none? To my left? Okay, so administrative update is over, and now council discussion and comment. Counselor Smart?
Thank you. So for the public, especially citizens of Ward 6, as my fellow councilors know, I've recently submitted a letter requesting my withdrawal from the upcoming race. That letter has not been accepted because of the timing, and basically, we can't have ballots reprinted, but I wanted to let everybody know that my intention is to withdraw from the race. I want to read a little bit of my letter just for the public. "This decision was not made lightly, and is the result of a recent change in circumstances that I believe would restrict me from dedicating the time and energy necessary to fulfill my duties as city councilor. The residents of Ward 6 and the city of Saco deserve a council that is able to fully dedicate itself to the important issues at hand and effectively and efficiently execute the will of the citizens. Therefore, it is with a heavy heart that I must withdraw, request my withdrawal of my candidacy. I intend to remain involved in Saco as much as possible, and I hope that I can continue to help Saco move forward. Please accept my sincerest apologies for any issues my late notice may have caused, and I hope to be able to again serve the people of Saco in the future. Finally, and most sincerely, I want to thank the city and staff and employees of Saco for your diligent and often thankless work in continuing the city's pursuit of excellence in service of our citizens. I truly believe that Saco is a city like no other, and I am eternally grateful for the opportunity to serve as one of its councilors." Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Smart, if you have an electronic copy of what you've just read, would you forward it to the city clerk so that she can actually just paste it into the minutes?
I believe she already has it.
Oh, okay. Excuse me. She already has it. Thank you. Any other council comment or discussion to my left? Any council comment or discussion to my right? It's Counselor Archer.
Yes, I got a call from a constituent, and Pat Fox has already answered it. So I think they're already starting to do surveys on the new exit. I had some, not some complaints, but just a question on why all these flags were going up, and it was suggested that it's connected to the turnpike project. So just wanted to put that out there for anybody who has some random flags out on their back, near the turnpike properties that are adjacent to it.
So, Mr. Fox, you want to speak to that?
Sure. Thank you for bringing it up, so we can just let other people know. I think any direct butter -- so the turnpike is moving forward with at least preliminary design, and putting in their, I would say, in their four- or five-year work plan, possible construction of additional ramps for Route 112. So it is moving quite quickly. Any butter to the area between, say, Garfield Street and probably access to the Hillview Heights neighborhood? Any direct butter to North Street? I believe received a letter. The main turnpike authority did share it with us, just to let us know what they'd be sending out, where they were going to collect survey along North Street for any potential or chance of widening, or really to find out where the existing right-of-way is. Anyone in a budding neighborhood's two main turnpike right-of-way right now, if they see flagging and whatnot, and they did not receive one of those notices, they are probably surveying within property they already own, already retain the rights to. So the intention, when they did look at additional ramps, was to stay within their right-of-way, but of course, they have to survey and do a full design to find out if that's feasible. So they are moving forward with survey and collecting that data so that they can do a preliminary design and get more realistic cost estimates, environmental permitting needs, and whatnot.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments or discussion to my right? To my left, Counselor Copeland?
Thank you for that information. Would you please forward to council the letter that was sent to the residents, please?
Yep, we can forward that along.
Thank you.
Additional to my left? Seeing none? Additional to my right? Seeing none? The executive session has been withdrawn, and so therefore, we're at a point of asking for a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Counselor Minton? Do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor Smart has seconded it. I have a motion adjourned by Counselor Minton, second by Counselor Smart. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston? The motion passes 7-0. We are adjourned at 8:04.